It being 7:04 on Tuesday, December 19th, may I have a motion to call a meeting to order and accept the agenda?
So moved.
And second?
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Any Watkins this evening? There being none, we'll move to the report of the acting town administrator, Al.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I want to update you on a few items that have been underway here the last week or so, just so that you and the town are aware of it. First of all, the, I'm happy to say, the five-year capital plan has been prepared and soon will be sent along to capital planning, you folks, and the advisory committee for review in preparation for a final presentation at town meeting. The town and school FY '19 capital projects, just for the year that's coming up, there were, we're recommending, Nancy Holt and I went through these in fine detail, Nancy a lot finer detail than I did, by the way. Thank you Nancy. We are recommending $10 million worth of capital projects out of a near, nearly 22 million that were proposed. This cuts across the school, the enterprises, and the town. Funding sources for these projects include 52 percent of enterprise borrowing, 27 percent from free cash, 7 percent from revolving funds, 6 percent from enterprise retained earnings and receipts, and the remaining, about 8 percent of the sources, capital stabilization, general fund borrowing, and taxation. You can see the majority of that is in, in the enterprises. Included in the plan are funds for a new senior center design, replacement of the irrigation system at Widow's Walk, improvements to the schools, the Hummer Rock Fire Station, public safety communication equipment, improvements to the sewer and water plants, improvements to the community TV studio, and Egypt Beach parking area. It includes also updating the town's master plan and replacing numerous vehicles in the DPW, the schools, and the fire department. And details to follow.
Great.
Then, the next thing I'd like to report on is the operating budgets. And first of all, they were all submitted on time by the departments, and then Nancy spent one Herculean effort over a weekend assembling those budgets into one consolidated budget sheet, so we could look at what are the budget requests, and compare that to the forecasting committee's forecast of revenues. Now, in the forecasting committee's forecast of revenues, some of those are a bit conservative because we don't know what the revenues actually will be, but we're holding with all the conservative estimates for revenues, and comparing budget requests with revenues, there was a gap of $600,000. So, we went through all those budgets, 21 meetings with department heads over 11 days to whittle down those budgets, so that we now have a balance. We are, we're able to meet the forecasted revenues with the, with the budgets that are in place, and that we'll be forwarding to you for your review over the course of January and February. Well, we'll give you the whole budget, then you'll be reviewing it with departments over January and February. I'm happy to say that even whittling down the $600,000, there was no fall in your sword issues. It pretty much, I think we, everyone's, can live within the budgets that, that we're pulling together. Of course, this will be the budget that, that will be the department heads and Jim's and yours to deliver over the next year, but he's coming in at a time where he can, it's a good, it was a good exercise in that he now knows what the budgets are, that they're in balance, and importantly, we reviewed all the goals and challenges and accomplishments by each department to ensure that they were focused, that the priorities were right, and that there's a clarity around them, so that you could understand what it is that they say the challenges are and the, and the plans are for the next year. And this will help him get on board with his, with his new staff when he shows up on January the 3rd. So, in these balanced budgets for the enterprises and the revolving funds and the general funds, kind of the key service improvements are improvements in the services in the, in the Board of Health, we're, we're advocating adding a staff member there, improvements in services at the Council on Aging, subsidizing, paying for the FACS Substance Abuse Prevention Program in anticipation that if we don't get a grant, we'll still want that program to continue, additions to help with the elections process, additions to the expectations of needs in veteran subsistence areas, and supporting of the two sister city projects. So, I think we've got a set of budgets that, that if approved, will be workable, and, and will deliver additional services for the community. The next area I'd like to cover is the, just a reminder on the Ellis property. The Attorney General's Office has gotten back and granted an extension of time because they recognize that what they had asked us to do involves town meeting action and legislative action. So, converting the bulk of the Ellis estate into a property on which there's a conservation restriction applied to it, requires that we remove the conservation restriction that's already on it under Article 97, and so that's why there's this complication. So, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll have a warrant article for the special, for the annual town meeting, to have town meeting vote to take it out of 97 and apply a conservation restriction on it, and then the legislators, local legislators have offered to help getting a quick legislative action through, so that before July 1st, that everything will be in place. This will include the swap property as well as the, the old Ellis estate, which is already in conservation. The senior center, we are on the cusp of issuing the request for services for an all-owners project manager. The funding that's available, is already available for the first portion of, of this work. It wouldn't, the funding doesn't carry us all the way through construction, because what we're asking for is an OPM to carry us through architectural design and a fall town meeting, where then a firm estimate will be available for presenting to town meeting to request town, if, 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 this is the will of the town, to go forward with a construction funding, and then perhaps a debt exclusion override, if that's the choice for how we would fund this.
Can I jump in there, Al?
Pardon?
Can I jump in for a second?
Yes, please.
So, how's that process gonna take place? You're gonna go before the Public Buildings Committee?
Yes, we issued the RFP, the Public Building Committee, Commission reviews all of the respondents, makes us a recommended selection, you, and by the way, the, there'll be two members from the Council on Aging that we will ask you to...
Like the library?
Appoint, yes. So, in your January 11th meeting, you'll appoint two members of the Council on Aging, and the 16th of January meeting, the Public Building Commission will review the applications. They'll make a recommendation coming out of that to you in the next meeting or two. There'll be some negotiation on contract pricing with the town administrator and the OPM selectee, and then you will vote to award a contract, and then the OPM will then begin work. Their first work will be to then go select an architectural firm. We have money to select the architectural firm.
Right.
No, we have money, no, I'm sorry, to select the architectural firm, and then at spring town meeting, there is a budget, a capital article to then hire the architect. The architect would be hired in late April and would begin work, do the preliminary architectural work through the summer, be ready for town meeting in the fall, and at that point in time, we would have, we would have committed about $570,000 towards the project, and then if town meeting votes to go forward, then we would go forward at that point.
So, $570, so before we put a shovel on the ground?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The assessor, as you know, Steve Jarzabowski has asked, is planning to retire coming in the beginning of January. We've gone out and sought applicants, we have 10 applicants for that job, all with very good CVs, and this is a, really a positive recognition of the stability of the way that that man has managed our, that end of our business, and the respect that he has, people want to go to jobs that, that, you know, are in control, and clearly, with 10 applicants, they feel very good about Steve's work after 29 years of service to the, to our community. So, the top three candidates are being interviewed, one today, two tomorrow, by a board that consists of Steve, Nancy Holt, and Todd Glowak, who is the assessor. They will recommend among those three, I presume, their first choice, and then we will make an offer to that person, and then Steve has offered to come back in January to help onboard him if necessary. As it works out, Steve and all of them are, pretty much all know each other, and they're all experienced people, so it'll be a matter of more meeting people, I think, than anything else. So, that, this is all set, Jim will then wrap this up when he arrives in January. He'll make the offer, and, okay. We received two grants recently, one safety grant from our insurer, Mia, and that's for confined entry, confined space entry equipment, you know, going down into a manhole or other confined spaces. It would be equipment that, to ensure the safety going in, and also, if necessary, retrieve the individual if something does happen. It's a $7,000 safety grant, is one of the benefits of being part of my insurance, we're real happy with that. Also, I just got received notice that the Army Corps of Engineer 301 Grant has been awarded, I don't know the amount yet, but it's for preliminary engineering on a seawall work in the area of Turner and Oceanside work, some preliminary work there. So, grants just keep coming in.
That's great.
Almost lastly, Cole Parkway, this is the next to last item. Please report that this is the very last year that you will see stinky unsightly docks stacked in Cole Parkway all winter long.
Should've saved that for John.
Yeah. I'm sorry, John's not here.
We'll have to update him at the end.
John, if you're watching, good news.
John will be here momentarily.
The harbor messers got, come up with a very clever project, is a reapplication of projects that professionals know in, in marinas, they, they're installing, he's changing how the docks are installed, so the docks will stay in the water all winter, and they'll be kept from freezing with de-icers, which are pumps that keep the water stirred up. You can go down in the seas though, he might, he has some in the water for a demonstration project right now, I have a little video of it I could send you if you want, but it's a neat project, and it'll, and it will really improve the quality of life during the winter down on the, on Cole Parkway.
Thanks, Stephen, for finding this.
And lastly, the new town manager, town administrator, Jim Boudros dropped by today to do some, sign up paperwork for his, getting ready to come, come onboard on January 3rd. He'll be in the office a little bit next week interviewing candidates for the Human Resources Manager, and we have picked a couple of really good candidates, a couple internal and a couple external candidates that we're looking at for the Human Resources Manager. He'll come to work on the second full-time, and I've prepared for him a hot sheet of kind of the rolling articles, arguments that, you know, are either in process or he could expect to see, and we'll send that to him next week, so he'll be all ready, he can have a happy holiday and hit the ground running, and, and I'll be running.
You got that ankle sprain?
That's it, thank you.
Is that it, Al? Well, Al, first of all, you know, thank you and Nancy for all the budgetary work. It's a lot to pull everything together, and all the department heads, but obviously, we wouldn't have been able to get to where we are without the two of you leading the way, and, and especially you stepping in to continue to move the town forward, you know, during our interim here. You've been great to work with, can't thank you enough.
Well, it was interesting being on the other side of the table during budgets, because in my ex-years of being involved with the town, I was always the one whining for more, 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 and now I had to...
Lost your job, you're on that side.
...tell them how just impossible that was, which I didn't get any whining, I find that I was probably the only person that ever whined. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, Al, I mean, gosh, we were on the advisory committee together, what, 20 years ago or something?
Yeah.
That's when, that's when it all started, you got bored with that, and you went to ZBA, and then you came in and be the DPW Director, and now all the way up here, you really, you were very qualified to step in, you did a great job, you know, in the short stood, we're here, short to us, long to you, but really, I don't know what we would've done without you doing it, so I really appreciate as a citizen for you stepping up and really helping the town out during that transition period, and, and it just turned out great. You know, it really turned out great, and everything, it's, it's been, you know, no bumps along the road, and Jim's gonna come into a pretty solid position, and, you know, like you've said all along, the staff behind him is, is superb, so I think, I think it's gonna be great, but thank you for all your effort.
You're very welcome.
Al, thank you, I just, the only thing I could add is how smooth it went, and, and for me, and I, you know, Nancy and Lorraine, and, you know...
Oh, we had some tough days.
Well, I don't know, you hit it, you hit it well, you know, that's for sure, but thank you very, very much.
I was ast, I'm astounded by the quality of the staff, the dedication of people who are in town hall, I mean, when I was working with them day in, day out, I knew that, but you're busy all the time, but when you find out the degree of support that people give each other, and the dedication to their job, it's just, it's really a wonderful thing to, to see in, in action, so.
Well, don't go far, okay?
Thanks, Al. That's it, right? The other report? Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, sure.
Gordon Price, 48, now onboard. Is it the intention that the two members who will be representing the Council on Aging to the Public Buildings Commission will have voting privileges?
Yes.
Yeah.
Two members that, two, two members are always added by whatever's, whatever building is being built, there's a subject group, so for police and fire, there's police and fire were added as voting members, so the Public Building Commission consists of five standing members, and then two appointed from the subject building for the duration of that topic.
I also would like to add my thanks to Al for all he's done for the Council on Aging over the last year, two years, walking us through the sites, the brambles and bushes, pointing out advantages and disadvantages, and also want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Chairman for helping to move the senior center project forward. I think it's a great, a great track that we're on, and I look forward to more good news in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion vote for a library donation, Jesse, Finney? How are you, Jesse?
Good, how are you guys?
Welcome, we're great.
Thanks for having me.
We like starting off with good news.
Yeah, well, this is definitely good news, I'm here to present a donation from the estate of Eileen Glavin, who is a patron of ours who passed away recently, much too early in her life, she was in her mid-60s. I did wonder if it was okay to say a few words about her?
Of course.
So, I unfortunately never got to know her myself, but I talked to some of my staff about her, and she was a really wonderful person, and I really think it speaks to her, you know, she gave to many, many charitable organizations through her estate, and we were one of, of many, both regionally and nationally, and this, you know, is a donation that I hope will help people like her, it's my understanding that a lot of the times that she came to the library, she was looking for materials to broaden her horizons and, and learn more about life, and I think that she sort of used the library as part of a path to, to grow as a person, that's kind of my understanding of the way that she, that she used the library. She apparently had a really quick wit, and always had kind of a little funny thing to say to, to the staff, and was just, from my understanding, a really kind person, and a person who, again, didn't have a nearly long enough life, but really lived her life to the fullest, so we appreciate her donation, and, you know, for anyone, we do get recognized in people's wills from time to time, or other ways, and of course, other people give the library donations, a lot of people have given to the library project, and we just want everybody to know how meaningful it is when we're recognized in that way, not, obviously the monetary benefit is wonderful, to be able to continue to grow our collection and our resources, but also just to know that those people who are so much a part of our lives, we're a part of their lives too, and that our organization has meaning to them and their life, because that's really why we come to work every day, why we do the work that we do, so I just wanted to thank Ms. Glavin, and, and just to let you guys know about this wonderful donation.
No, well, thank you, and I think you're absolutely right, it is a true testament to the service and the warmth that she felt there at the library and her passion for literature. Do you have any, do you ever name anything after like this, or, I know it's too early to know, you know, the thoughts of how you would use it, but to make sure that she is memorialized?
We do, and I'd like to reach out to, there's, there's a couple of people who are really closely linked with her estate, she didn't leave behind children or anything like that, but I know that there are some people linked to her estate that I'd like to reach out to and find out if she were to be recognized by name, you know, what, what do you think would be a priority for her, and, and how would we go about doing that, that would best honor her?
Okay, that's great. Does anybody have any questions for Jesse, any comments?
No.
That's wonderful.
No, it's great.
Yeah, it's wonderful, so, thank you. So, we'll just have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen accept a donation from the estate of Ms. Eileen Glavin to the town, Situate Town Library.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you so much. You guys have wonderful holidays.
Please extend our gratitude to the estate as well.
Thanks.
No, that's the background. Yeah. Okay, so next on the agenda is discussion and vote for the Voyage New Year's Eve Recreation License, Liquor License. Keith O'Callaghan, how are you, Keith?
Good evening, Madam Chair. How are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Good evening.
So, I know when you first came to apply for a license, we granted it to midnight?
Yes.
And so, you are here to request a little bit of an extension for New Year's Eve?
Yes, please, yeah, an hour past, we're late to 1:00 a.m.
Till 1:00 a.m.?
Yeah.
And have you notified any of the Butters?
I have not, no.
Does anybody have any questions for Keith?
No questions, maybe a comment?
Yeah.
It's what the other establishments have, it's New Year's Eve, and windows are closed, and it's, so, it's not like it's 4th of July or something like that.
Right, right. Do you have any plans set in place, what type of...
No plans, it was kind of like a last-minute thing, you know, and my wife was like, are we gonna do something, and I didn't even think of it, so, last minute, I went to the line and tried to get in before.
Sure. Tony, do you have any questions?
I think it's a great idea, I think, you know, I don't know about the Butters, I wish we had, what do you think we have to do for that, Lorraine? Just contact them, if you can, tomorrow?
You can send a note to the Butters and they'll...
Sure, I can do that, yeah. Very close.
Karen, did you have anything?
I think it's always a good idea to listen to your wife's recommendations.
Yeah, really, it was a last-minute thing, you know.
No, I don't think it would be unexpected by your neighbors, so...
Hopefully someone shows up, you know.
They will.
But, you know, then they're not rushing them out.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. Is there anybody in the audience that had any comments or concerns? Okay, don't see any. I'll take a motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen extend the liquor license hours for the Voyage Restaurant to 1:00 a.m. on January 1st, 2018, for New Year's Eve.
Second.
Move by Mr. Biniani, second by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Four zero, you're all set.
Thanks, my lady, appreciate it, thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Have a great New Year's Eve.
Good night.
Sounds like fun. Okay, the next item on the agenda, I'm going to delay, it's a discussion and vote on the naming of the Old Gates Gym and the sign more, I hope you don't mind, but Mr. Danahue wanted to be present for that discussion, and he should be along momentarily, is that okay with you?
That's fine, Lorraine told me, I just came around.
Okay, okay, just wanted to set the expectation. All right, great, is Jen here?
Here.
Yeah, there she is, okay. So, the next on the agenda is a discussion and vote for a proposed Flu Clinic Revolving Fund General Bylaw Amendment. Hi, Jen.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Jen?
So, the, the Board of Health currently administers a flu clinic revolving fund, and the current wording of the revolving fund limits us to being able to provide flu vaccines. Our public health nurse would like to be able to expand her offerings during clinics to other public health vaccines, including but not limited to, say, pneumonia and shingles, so we're proposing to amend the bylaw so that she could use the revolving fund monies to purchase and provide those additional vaccines.
Okay. And that has to be done at town meeting, right?
Right, correct.
To be done at town meeting. So, this is just a motion to put that bylaw language change on town meeting and on the warrant, right?
This is a motion to, for the Selectmen to ask the Board of Health to vote on this, to put on the town meeting warrant.
Say that again?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a motion to have the Board of Health review it and make a, and put it on the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Oh, they would recommend.
Right, so they have to recommend it.
Got it. So, just we're directing them to do that.
You're just directing them to do that.
Okay.
And explain the money transaction there, so...
So, so it's a revolving fund, so we pay for vaccines, right now we pay for flu vaccines out of that fund, and the town gets reimbursed a certain dollar amount for every flu shot it gives a resident, so I believe if I'm not mistaken, in the last year, the public health nurse brought in approximately $16,000 into the, into the flu revolving fund, so she's been making money, and would like to be able to spend that in additional ways, given that the pneumonia vaccine has become an item that, that older folks in particular would like.
And is it the state that reimburses?
That's correct.
And is it within the state bylaw, if we're getting reimbursed for flu, do we have the flexibility to utilize it for other vaccines?
I believe we do.
Yeah, I don't know any restriction on it because it's a, it's more of a Medicare reimbursement.
Okay.
Right.
Or it's not specifically tied to a specific...
The state used to provide the vaccine, they don't provide it anymore, they don't buy it.
We, we purchase it using the revolving funds, and between the insurance and state-run healthcare, Medicare, we get reimbursed for every shot that she provides, and so she provides documentation on a monthly basis during the clinic season, so that we ultimately get reimbursed.
So, I think we're partially reimbursed for, for the nurse's time as well.
Right, okay. All right. Any other questions for Jen?
Nope.
Nope. All right, some more?
Motion. Move to turn over General Bylaw Article on Proposed Expansion of the Flu Clinic Revolving Fund to the Board of Health for Review and Recommendations.
Second.
Move by Mr. Biniani, second by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You're good, four zero. Thanks, Jen, it's a great idea.
Thank you.
So, thanks for doing that. Have a great night.
Thank you, too.
And happy holidays, have a great holiday. Have to say that to everybody tonight, it's the last time we'll see everybody till next year, right?
See you next year.
Okay, next is a discussion and vote for Proposed Zoning Map Amendment, for the extension of the Business District and Overlay District. Brad?
Hello.
How are you, Brad?
Good, how are you?
Great.
Excuse me.
So, is this another type of motion, just to ask the Planning Board to...
Yeah, so we are, the, the motion would be, or the, the vote would be to refer it back to the Planning Board, so they can hold a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment. So, we had, just for, by way of background, we had the current property owner at Seven New Driftway approach the Planning Board about a potential rezoning of their property. I don't know if you have the map in front of you, I just have a small one here.
Yeah, we have.
But if you, if you look at the map, the existing, the property at Seven New Driftway, there's, it's almost like kind of a hole in the donut, if you, if you think of it that way, the properties...
You have a color copy on your desk.
Yeah, we do.
Oh.
Oh, on the desk as well.
Yeah, on the desk.
Thank you, Lorraine.
So, the property, excuse me, is completely surrounded by the existing Governor of Business District, and this property, however, is residentially zoned, and the, the property, the, the building that's been there for decades, but the, that use as a medical office has been that way for several decades.
Oh, okay, oh, gotcha.
So, the proposed, you know, the owner petitioned the Planning Board, would we support a change? If the Planning Board does, and this would be really to recognize what's there now, there's already a, a business use there now, and it would, it would also open the door to future changes on the site, you know, consistent with the bylaw, other business uses as well.
So, it's just extending it to his property, the red zone?
Yeah, it's kind of filling in that, again, the, the hole in the donut, I don't know why it was overlooked and why it was zoned residential, but it's been in a, you know, a business use now for decades.
I think that's under a special permit now for medical offices only, if I'm not mistaken. Right now, for example, a realtor or an insurance company couldn't move in there, as I was told.
No, yeah, it would only be, as a right, would be residential uses, or if that has special provisions to be there, it'd be that use only.
Right, right, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Does anybody have any additional questions for Brad? It makes sense to me, so I don't...
Yeah, so it's just, is it the dark green strip only?
It is the dark green, sorry, yes. So, that's their, their site. And right now, it's, again, the existing medical building and then a parking lot.
Makes sense.
So, does it make sense to do the light green strip next to it also?
No, the light...
Isn't that like wetlands?
Yeah, that's a salt marsh and Thailand conservation district.
Was that the drain, is that where it goes on the street?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so this would go to a public hearing with the planning board. We'd have an opportunity for the public to weigh in and review, and then it would eventually, you know, if it all goes well there, go to town meeting for a vote.
Okay.
So, it includes all of his property?
All of that property, yes. It's two parcels, but it's, it would all be included.
All right. Any other questions for Brad?
No.
No? All right, you have a motion?
Move to turn over zoning article on proposed extension of the Business District and Village Business Overlay District to the Planning Board for review and recommendation in accordance with Master of the Law, Chapter 40A.
Second.
Move by Mr. Biniani, second by Mr. Harris. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstained.
Thanks, Brad.
Great, thank you.
You're all set. Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
Have a happy new year.
Thank you.
All right, so, John, we can go right back up to the naming?
Sure.
Are you...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, we'll go back up to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a discussion and vote for the naming of Old Gates Gym. Maura Glancy, if you want to come up, and I know, John, this was something that you wanted to present, I think, together with Maura, so...
Yeah.
I'll leave it up to the two of you to present it.
Well, I assume Maura's gonna probably say that there have been some kind of mix-ups with respect to various activities. I know, maybe from town side, maybe, not just from rec, but I know with town organizations where people will say, you know, the game or whatever's being utilized at Gates, and people tend to go to Gates, and then they find out that actually, no, we mean the new Gates, and then sometimes people are saying Gates, so they end up at the new Gates, only to find out that they're actually at the old Gates. So, I guess, you know, it's funny, in, in the legal realm, there are two courthouses in Suffolk, right downtown Boston. It's called Pemberton Square, and there's the old courthouse, and then there is the new courthouse. They're side by side. The old courthouse was built in like 1850, 1870. The new courthouse was built 1910. So, the bottom line was, it wasn't new, it's still old, and they actually built a newer courthouse in New Chardin Square, which is closer to the garden. So, you can see how there can be a mix-up or a misconception as to which gymnasium are you gonna go use. And so, I, I know, I've seen it on, on some of the private activities, and this was an issue that we kind of talked about briefly in the past, about what do we call Gates Gymnasium? What is the name and the origin of the Gates, you know, the old Gates? And so, one of the things I had done a few years ago in preparation for one of the town meetings was to do some research on the schools, and I had happened to take a look at one of the books, a very interesting book about school, Situate's Education, for the past almost 400 years, at the Historical Society, basically Situate's Education by, I think it's Fryman, I think is the gentleman's name, Jarvis. So, in the course of reading up the materials, I was studying about Situate's High School, and of course, the Red Schoolhouse, and now it's the Historical Society, and then how it was built next to the Old Town Hall that used to be up on First Parish, and then how they moved the old schoolhouse and built the present high school, which ultimately had been expanded in a few years, and of course, at some point, the high school ended up leaving on First Parish and going up here off of Chief Justice Cushing Highway. And in the process, they were talking about different additions and so on and so forth. So, what I had found out was back in 1952, there was an addition put on for the new gymnasium at the time. And at the time, it was dedicated in 1954, along with other classrooms, laboratories, and, and different wings. They had dedicated it to the veterans who had served and died in the Second World War, and they had put a plaque up at the high school that was on First Parish. And so, you know, I was thinking, gee, what, why isn't there some kind of recognition of it? And of course, I think it was about in 2012, there was an offer by one of the residents who offered to redo the court floor for free, and we had another dedication just for the court. The VFW came up, and we had, you know, recognized the fact that it was for the soldiers and, and I believe, World War II. But the problem was, is that nobody knows that for certain. You drive by it, just Gates Gym. And so, I was always thinking that, gee, we should really have some kind of name on it. I think it's come full circle. Now, we definitely have to have some recognition of the gymnasium so people can identify where they're going, as opposed to Gates. The plaque itself had been removed from the then-existing high school, which turned into Gates Middle School, and had been brought up to the high school here, and was actually put outside of the auditorium until they demoed that two years ago, and now they have the plaque, and I guess the school department's looking to try to relocate that probably somewhere near their new gymnasium. But I thought the fact that the gymnasium originally was dedicated to the veterans of World War II, it might be consistent to suggest rededicating it to all veterans, not just the ones who had perished and served and gave their lives, but also all veterans who've served both in good times and, and, and serious times and war times. And so, I was thinking, maybe it would be nice to consider maybe naming it the Veteran Gym, the Veteran Memorial Gym, but something to the effect of the vets. One thing I did want to say is, and I thought, I got a copy of the plaque, and I just wanted to at least pay homage to, there are 16 individuals who gave their lives during the Second World War, and they were from Situate, and I just thought I'd, I'd mention them again so that people watching and could understand who they were. It was Chase Abbott, Raymond Andrews, Wilford Appleton, Alino Bush, Robert Cole, Joseph DeBoo, Parker Yule, Robert Fleming, Chester Gurney Jr., Thomas Harrigan, Edward Hooper, Renee Jacobucci, Nelson Kindlin, Alwin Lane, Edward Nichols, Frank Shea Jr., and an Edwin Spear. So, I just thought, you know what, I just thought, at this point, maybe that would be something to consider. I'd raise it to the rest of the board, and certainly, and we'd go from there.
Before we have questions, Maura, did you have anything that you wanted to add and some challenges that you're having as well?
Well, just another little challenge that we have also. In the back, there's a field. It's always been called Gates Field. So, that's where it originated from. We had, a lot of people in this fall were having a hard time trying to find, where's Gates Field? They'd end up up here, when they actually had to go down to the Gate School, the Old Gate School. So, it's not only the gymnasium that gets confused, it's the whole, the whole area that gets confused, because of the outside with the field and also the gymnasium. And then eventually, we'll be there, so it will be, hopefully, they'll be able to find us better than they do now. We're on the random floor of Jenkins, and people still don't know where we are, so. That's all I, if you do something, I'd like to see it...
You're just looking for some designation.
You know, take care of the whole area.
Interesting. Comments?
Is, is the entrance to that field only from Cudworth?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you went to the side of, yes.
You really can't do that.
The seawind, you can get, you can walk back through.
You can get through there.
Yeah, but if you're driving a car, you're gonna be coming on Cudworth to get there, most likely.
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Because that was one thing in thinking about, you know, solving the directional issue. I agree that, and it makes sense to, to look at, honor what it was before, but if we can combine it with some sort of clear directional, just like we did with North Situate Playground, maybe it's the Cudworth Memorial and Cudworth Field, or something that makes it very clear where the location is, might be a way to go.
Who are the Cudworths, John? Do you know that answer?
Off the top of my head...
I look at you because you're a local historian. Maybe somebody else knows. Sorry, Sean, maybe you know.
Taking the tour, I believe...
Sean went to high school with them, right?
Yeah. Knew that was coming.
I don't have a, I'd have to ask Dave Ball and his local sect for better. I know that they played an important role with, I believe, religious freedom, because they had people, their services on the second floor, and different other aspects, and, and, you know, and the house, I believe, was built in late 1700s. I don't think it's 1600s, but, but I'm not really sure.
I ask only just to see if you could make some sort of...
You got me on that one.
Relationship. I know, you usually know all those answers. Sean, did you have any questions?
No, no, you have, you have to do something, though, to, so people coming from out of town can distinguish where they're going. So, by the time they get to the right spot, game's half over, if not over, so.
Tony?
Yeah, I, I think, we talked about it the last meeting, you know, I think it's a good idea. I think the veterans' aspect of the gym is great, especially if it was already dedicated in that honor. The field, I'd like to think about that a little bit, but I agree with Maura that it's gotta be named something. And that whole area, you know, something's gonna happen in the next six months, in terms of, senior center, and a lot's gonna go on there, and we're gonna figure out what's going on. I think we should just incorporate that field into that as well. You know, because we don't even know what the layout's gonna be. You know, the field may be much less, you know, we don't know. So, until we get the drawings back and see if it's a, a track, maybe it ends up just being a track, or maybe it ends up being a baseball field, and it may be a different naming purpose, so.
Both my parents are veterans, so it's, it's a nice honor if you do something like that for a gym. I totally agree. It kind of got buried. I think it did get buried, and I think it's time to resurface. Was it back in 2010, my children were going there at the time? They did some kind of dedication at the same time?
Might have been the floor, because that's, that's what I, they had redone the floor...
Over Thanksgiving.
Over Thanksgiving. It was for free, and I remember going to the rededication on the gymnasium floor for it. But that's a prime example where...
Right.
And that's why I think the designation's gotta be actually on the building. You gotta have a name on the building so people don't forget it and have it stuck to the crack.
I agree.
So, what are you thinking? Situate Veterans Memorial Gymnasium? Is that, or Veterans Memorial Gymnasium? What were your thoughts?
You know, I initially thought the veterans' gym...
What was it named, what was the intent initially?
The intent was, the Situate High School pays homage to the memory of the veterans, to the veterans of World War II. That's what it was for. To our hero dead in World War II. That's what the gym was for.
Well, I like your idea that it's for all veterans.
Yeah.
So, you know...
I think it's appropriate, given that the, you know, right across the street is where we have all of the monuments and, and the cemetery next door. So, I think it all makes a lot of sense for our town common. I don't know what the naming should be.
So, after we decide that, would you recommend like a plaque, a bronze plaque or something on the building, John?
I certainly think one thing we should do is put a sign, a fairly large sign that designates this as, so people know it. Separate the part. I think you should have recognition for the sign with this town of Situate Rec Department, you know, just like, I assume we're gonna have one with the Board of Health, so people are gonna identify it. But I think, I think really, the way to do it proper would be to put it literally on the building, so that when you drive by, you see it.
Right.
And then people are gonna, it's gonna pick up in the vernacular, and people are gonna know it right away for what it is.
They actually named the road, too.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I pulled a newspaper article. It was originally named the Memorial Gym.
Memorial Gym?
It was what, Veterans Memorial Gym?
No, just Memorial.
The Memorial Gym was the original name, based on this newspaper article from 2000.
What, what year is that? 2010?
This newspaper article's 2010.
Do, what do you think of the idea of Cudworth Memorial? To, to tie it to the location, or is that just diminishing what you want to do?
I, I think, just my personal preference would be, I think we do it to the, to the veterans, you know. Obviously, it was clearly dedicated to the, the men who, and women, but in this case, the men who, who died in World War II. And I just think that, you know, if the high school is gonna maintain the plaque in the high school, then, you know, my feeling on it is, let's maintain the dedication of the gym to veterans, all active and all those who've served peacetime in war. I think it would be an honor to all of them for their service, and, you know, we could, you know, I know that, I don't know how this would work. I know the veterans, the, what do you call it, the American Legion was talking about at some point having like a wall, but, you know, I've seen it. Maybe there's something that we could tie in in the future there.
Sure.
As a project for, for all the various people who've died and, you know, memorialize them.
All right, so do we think the Veterans Memorial Gym or Situate Veterans Memorial Gym?
The Veterans Memorial Gym, I think is the, great.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion?
You know what, I'd like to...
Do you want to wait and think about it?
Yeah, I'd like, well, maybe Ruth will put something in the paper, and maybe people will have opinions and then...
It's a good idea.
Come to the meeting tonight.
Yeah.
So, maybe we just get it out there and vote on it next week?
I'm fine with that. You're, you're okay till January 9th, right?
I would, yeah, just let it, that we're inclined to go with Veterans Memorial. What did I say?
Yeah.
Veterans Memorial.
I think that's the right name.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's great. So, we'll, so folks, if anybody wants to get back to us, that would be great, and we'll take it up on the 9th, the agenda on that, and vote on it then, so we can...
What is the process of renaming something like that, John? I was just wondering that, just, like, if other things are named, I didn't know if you have to go through a process of, you just nominate?
Under the charter, the town side, anything that the town has control over, not the school, that the Board of Selectmen have the rights to be able to name, is what it is. We went through this one time with Roach Field. It actually, now I feel bad, it was originally named for another individual, who they now named one of the dugouts out, but now we call it Roach Field. And that's why I say, I think it's, these things in time will get potentially lost without maintaining some kind of major designation of what we're naming it for.
Good.
And then, just before you leave, Maura, Lorraine, I don't, why, why do we have to have a motion to give her permission to put a sign on the building to identify the Situate Recreation? We don't need a motion for that, do we? Can't they, can't you just do that?
Would they coexist? Is that what you're thinking?
As a facility.
Well, we want to, we want to order, order the sign from the building because they'll move in a few months.
Right, but we don't have to move on that, do we? Okay, I just want to make sure.
What, what is the status of them moving in? That was supposed to be...
When is Recreation moving in? When are the offices being relocated from one location to the next? My understanding is in January.
January 2nd, I have, we have a mover scheduled.
Oh, good, okay.
Oh, good, good.
And right now, we're just trying to tighten it up.
Tighten up, okay.
Great.
Great.
Gym looks great, by the way. It's really good.
Thank you.
All right, terrific. All right, so we'll visit it on the 9th?
Okay.
All right, sounds good?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Happy holidays.
You too.
Happy new year.
Thank you, you too.
We'll see you on the 9th. Thank you. All right, thanks, John. Next on the agenda is a discussion and vote on Fifty Country Way Sewer Requirements. Steve, Guard?
Yes.
And I know Kevin Cafferty's here as well, and Brad, and Karen Joseph's here as well. How are you tonight, Steve?
Good, thanks. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope everyone is well this evening. For the record, I'm Attorney Steve Guard, and I know we're a little ahead of schedule. My client was going to be here, but Greg Morse was also gonna be here, but that's okay. I can, I can give you a summary of where we're, what we're asking the Board to look at. Not a big deal. So, I res, I submitted a letter and some attachments to that letter, and hopefully, that's for you this evening. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, this is on Fifty Country Way. It's the first project to have been permitted under the Village Business Overlay District. I represented Chris Ford, who owned the property, and we got it through the permitting process. The process lasted approximately 14, 15 months. It was arduous, but it was, it was embraced by the town. Laura Harbottle was for the project, and we all worked through all the issues that we had. During the normal course of that project, the, the plans get sent out to the various departments, and they're reviewed, and the comments are given back to the developer, and then the engineers incorporate those comments, or I incorporate them into the special permit and whatnot. So... In this case, oh, and Greg's here. He got called away to Marshfield Conservation Commission, so, and Peter. The, the, so, the, in the discussions and the process, we evaluated and calculated the sewer connection fee structure based on the new version, although The, the, so, the, in the discussions and the process, we evaluated and calculated the sewer connection fee structure based on the new version, although there's an existing sewer connection at the property. The, if you recall, years ago, it was $5,000 to tie in per house for a privilege fee. If there was no sewer and sewer was being put on a property or a neighborhood, there was, there's a betterment, which is in the $20,000 range. So these fees are calculated during the 2014-15 permitting process to be approximately $240,750. So we got the project approved, the special permit was recorded under that basis, and then Mr. Genta purchased the property from Mr. Ford and began construction and whatnot, based on the representation of the special permit and then the enabling permits that we achieved. So at some point later on, a memo came from the Department of Public Works in an analysis based on a Weston and Sampson report that was in 2016, which was post-permitting of the project. It was suggested that the calculations were $240,750, but also that the main sewer line, that there was a public improvement requirement in that letter. And that's to replace a pipe that is the main sewer line over near the River Shed property where the pump station is. So my client, it was unexpected. We were taken a bit by surprise that that would have been imposed as a condition of the property development. And we estimate the cost to do that between $85 and about $100,000. It was certainly something that my client didn't, didn't understand at the time, wasn't made aware of, nor were we made aware of during the permitting process, so. So we're here this evening to ask the board in their capacity, a sewer commissioners, to reconsider that particular imposition on this one specific project. As I'm sure you're all, you're all aware, and we're hopeful that there will be many projects like this in the Village Business Overlay District. It is, it's a great project for where it's located, and it achieves the goal, which is to allow some density in an area that you can have a walking distance to the train and to encourage business as well, because it's a mixed-use property. The property itself is, is going to be 30 units, 16 one-beds, 14 two-beds, and there will be four affordable units, two and two, two ones and two bedroom units. So there is an affordability component and advantage to the town for those numbers, as well as the small density. The capacity, or I should say the sewer flowage is based on the Title V number of bedrooms, just like you would in a house or a subdivision, so it's really not much different than that. So essentially, we're asking the U.S. the selectmen to reconsider or to consider waiving the requirement for us to have to make such public improvements in order for the project to proceed. I think that, the way I look at the $240,000 is, that's from us, and I'm assuming there's going to be other projects that are, I'm pretty sure are in the works, that are going to be paying similar fees, and that's really for the town to use that to improve the infrastructure, to be able to handle the additional flow that is going to be, the additional demand on the system. Of course, the units don't, they, then they go on to pay the normal sewer fees on an annual basis, so anyway, that's where we're, that's what we're here to ask the board to consider.
Okay. Did, I have one question, Steve. I'm just looking at, trying to figure out the timeline. So the December 15th notice to you and your client from 2016?
Yeah.
That outlines all the different conditions.
Right.
I believe this is, is from Kevin from the DPW.
Right.
Now, did you say you received that after you already got the permit or before? That's, that was one piece of new information that I was just trying to understand.
Yeah, so the permit, it's, the special permit itself is dated, I think it's, looks like it's May of 2015. And the DPWs, which I included a copy of their comment pack, their comment paper to us was November 15, 2013. So it was all post-approval, and, you know, took us a bit by surprise.
Okay. Does anybody have?
Can Kevin explain what's?
Yeah, sure. You want to explain first?
Sure.
Or any questions? And now no Karen or Brad wants to come up from the planning board as well? Okay. Sounds good.
Good evening. So it was approved through the planning board earlier, but it was subject to review by DPW and meeting all their requirements. One of the things that were required from the contractor or the developer is to do a sewer study and make sure that we did have the volume of flow to handle these new buildings and the pipes that we have out there. So at the time, I believe, we requested flow meters and some other, other miscellaneous material. By the time the whole process was done, we had one of our sewer contractors that the developer paid for go do a complete study on the properties itself and look at the flows. And according to their suggestions, they were concerned about the last 60-foot run that could potentially back up with the additional, additional flows from this project. And that's where we came, that's where we got that from.
But that's my reference to the Weston Sampson report. The, my understanding from talking to Kevin is that the report doesn't say that it will overflow. It says that it is nearing capacity. So now, it's not, so our position is like, well, you know, we understand that, but you're putting a huge burden on us as a, as a project development, you know, for something that's not, you know, that might happen, might not. So it's, I mean, I think that, I'm not going to disagree with Kevin that this pipe probably needs to be replaced if all these other places start to pop up and you need to be done, but that, that's really what that 250 grand from us, and I'm sure there'll be more from other developers would, would go towards, you know.
Do any other people use that run of pipe?
Yes, and, and in the end of this, in the summary of the Weston Sampson report, I'll just read the item it says for you. "The last pipe segment entering the Herringbrook Pump Station will not be able to handle the additional peak instantaneous flows in the tributary area without temporary surcharging the line. This line should be replaced with a 12-inch pipe to sufficiently increase the carrying capacity." So that's where we came up with that from.
And you want this project to pay for the whole repair?
That's 60 feet.
Even though other people use it, too?
Well, it's, it currently works okay for the people on it now, but with the added flow, that's...
The added flow is putting the, the additional surcharge on it.
When did this project first start?
We started in November of 2013, Mr. Harris. Right, I shouldn't say November, you know, I had the date in my, in my file, but call it 2013 is before that, when we actually filed the applications for both.
2013. So when did Weston Sampson, you know, Green Bush was first or second, I can't recall, on the sewer expansion? My point is, which, Green Bush was what? Yeah, you were involved, Al.
It was, it was the, Weston Sampson, I mean, you're talking about when was the original sewer installed?
Well, well, first, you know, we did, we did Green Bush first, then we did the Cliffs.
It was about '05 or '06.
Oh, it was that much earlier, okay. So when Weston Sampson laid out the areas that they determined to be the, you know, most critical. You know, they would go down an area and they would look at areas that were going to be formays, you know, future houses and future developments. So that's what I was just wondering if they might have missed this, but if that was done in '05, this really wasn't on the radar at that time.
At the time, I think there was a couple of sewer units there. You know, there was the large house, the big farmhouse.
Five units at that, at that location.
That's right. I know it, I know it well, right.
There was an empty lot behind it.
Right.
And I think the question before you is not, is the pipe necessary? It's, is the cost of the pipe, town-owned infrastructure that is covered by the fees? Or is it special infrastructure that should be covered additionally by the developer? The, the change in fee structure from $5,000 to $14,000 was to recognize that when people are connecting to the sewer, they're, they're in fact paying for some of the infrastructure that's there, or the, or the improvements to the plant, improvements to pumping stations, that sort of thing.
But if things happened a little bit differently, you know, I realize that the total cost of the project is divided by the number of users, right? That's how we came up with $18,000, $19,000, $20,000. If this project was a little further along, and the engineers determined, yes, this additional work has to be done. Well, everyone in the Green Bush area would have to pay a little more, but it would be done once, not 10 years later, dug up again.
Right, so when, when the residents in Green Bush pay their $19,000, they were paying for those pipes to be placed in the ground.
That's correct.
When the next, after the project's over, they were paid by betterment. After the project's over, then anybody connecting is going to pay a connection, privilege fee to connect to that existing infrastructure, or to pay, or, or to make improvements to it. I think the question is, does the $14,000, were we anticipating that was to provide infrastructure reimbursement and improvements?
Right.
Or was that for something else?
This $240 is figured at $18,000 per unit, isn't it?
No, it's 14.
14, yeah. There's a breakdown inside the package.
So $14,000.
All right, 14, all right, okay.
14 per sewer unit.
Credit for what they had paid prior.
Sean, are you done?
For now, for now.
Karen?
You'll table, you'll... So, so Mr. Guard, so you got your permit, and the permit says, I just have to walk this through and make sure I understand. You get the permit and it says, "Subject to review with the fire department and this, you know, all the different departments."
Right, right.
So DPW comes back and says, "You need to do a study. We don't, we got to make sure this works." And then your client pays for that study. So was there, was it your, at that time, I would think there was a conversation about, well, if they find something, who's, you paid for the study, so there's a piece of information I don't quite get. Did you, what was your expectation of the?
I, I can't say that I, I had in my file during the permitting process that there was a requirement that we would pay for a study at that time. I don't know where that came from. I'm looking at what I have submitted to you as a DPW comment.
But you guys did pay for it, is my understanding.
Well, I don't know, when you say you guys, was it Mr. Ford that paid for it?
I'm sorry, you're...
Or was it Mr. Genta paid for it? Which, which one? The previous owner or the current owner?
I don't know that, but I don't believe the town paid for it.
I think he was required to pay for it.
Okay. So, right, so Peter paid for it.
So it was prior to his?
Yeah, so that all happened after the special permit was issued. Understanding that every permit is, is subject to obtaining other permits from other parts of the town, but when, you know, departments have, they look at the project for you, we got no feedback at all in all the time that we went through the process, as far as this would, this would be necessary. You know, so.
Al, what would, if the fire department had come back and said that the lines weren't adequate to provide this size unit with adequate fire protection? Is there a protocol for how we enhance that? I mean, it's basically the same question.
If the water lines could not provide sufficient water in the area?
Yeah, because it was five units, they're going to 30, they get the special permit to do it, subject to review from the fire department. I don't know. It's the same, I think it's the same question.
Actually, Karen Joseph, we kind of covered that in the permit.
Okay.
This is, 26. Development shall obtain all necessary approvals for use of town sewer prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference. Copies shall be furnished to the planning board. So it was anticipated that they may have to do something, and they have to provide the proof that the sewer had the capacity. The same thing with the water. A determination of the adequacy of the existing water sewers for the proposed use shall be provided to the DPW for their approval prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference. Installation of all water means and appurtenances shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW Water Division. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the owner's expense. This is a condition that is basically now filed in every...
And that's in the permit that?
That's in the permit that was issued.
For the water. Sewer doesn't mention.
All right, so then the other question I have is, you received this letter from DPW a year ago, so why, why is it now before us?
I, I can't answer that. We're, we're just developing the property, and this is coming up. We're being told that...
When did you take?
We can't get a water meter for the construction until we resolve the issue with the sewer department.
In one moment. Sir, could you just identify yourself for the record?
My name is Peter Genta.
Peter.
I'm a manager of Green Bush Station LLC, who's developing the project.
Can you go back to that one technicality you just spoke about? You said it said something in the special contract. You said it doesn't specify this, and I missed that exchange, so...
So paragraph 27 is referring to the water, as far as the way I read it. Paragraph 26 refers to getting all sewer permits, but it doesn't mention that any sewer improvements would be at the cost of the developer, the owner.
What does the sewer thing say? The same thing as the water?
I mean, it says that all, that the developer shall obtain all necessary approvals for use of the sewer prior to scheduling pre-construction.
Right.
It elaborates it on the water a little bit more detailed.
By saying that you'll have to pay anything?
That's correct.
So that doesn't say it in 26, but it does say it in 27?
Yeah. In 27, it says that we would have to be, to Ms. Canfield's question about the water and fire protection, we would be required under 27 to make those improvements post-permit.
Okay, so that's...
Under 26, it doesn't make that condition. It just says we have to get approvals, and we, you know, we, to get the approvals, we have the units, we pay the fees, we get the approvals. So I don't, I don't see where this is addressed here, and I don't see where we can hold Mr. Genta responsible for making public improvements when, it's not like this is a signalized intersection for a specific stop and chop that's going to, you know, for that reason. This is a sewer pipe that's existing, used by everyone in the neighborhood, going to be used by this project as it have, having been approved, and going to be used by other projects. It just seems to, it seems unfair to saddle this one property owner with such a large expense to benefit the entire Green Bush neighborhood, well, not the entire, but the section that this is served by this pipe. It would seem to me more, it would seem to me to be spread it out more evenly. And, you know, I've been part of the process with the privilege fees at $5,000, and I was aware that these privilege fees went to 14. We were paying $5,000 less than the betterment amount that most of these people get for the hookup fee. So, I mean, we're really throwing in the money that it's almost like the betterment. It's pretty darn close to a betterment fee.
Well, that's the intent.
Yeah.
No, but that's why the fee is what it is, is because you shouldn't get a discount for not being first, but I do understand your, I do understand your point.
Yeah.
I think the only, if I may, the only nuance here is, had, had you redeveloped and just had five units, which I believe is what was there before, it wouldn't have impacted the existing pipe. But adding 25 units impacts the existing pipe, that even though it's already there and servicing, I think that's the nuance here that's concerning. If you were doing five, we wouldn't be having this conversation because we wouldn't need to increase, increase the pipe at whatever level. So it's sort of a circular problem, is if it, you know...
I just think you're asking a lot of this particular property owner to, to shell out for infrastructure that's really going to benefit a lot more people in this town than just this one project. So I just think it's unfair. If it's a, maybe it's a sliding scale where the next project comes along, pays a little too. I don't know how to, you know, I'm dealing with it based on the rules that you have now promulgated, so, you know. Our position is, is that the $14,000 is supposed to, per unit is supposed to go to that, you know, that, that kind of stuff. When, when the, when the town system has reached its capacity, and yet they allow for Village Business Overlay District development with this kind of density, but they haven't prepared for it. It's unfair to ask a property owner to take on that, which I, I think we, our position is, would be the town's responsibility. Again, not that the town is charging for that. You know, they're, they're asking for these sewer connection fees in order to be able to deal with that.
And when did you take ownership of, or when did you buy this interest?
This was, I don't think I have the deed in here. Did I put the deed in here? I'm getting old. Let's see, like, two years ago?
So prior to, to the DPW's letter?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, we had our pre-construction meter, meeting prior to the letter, yeah. And the report that we paid for said that we would hit 97% capacity and that would be sufficient flow. So we're arguing over the, the, the extreme conditions in, in summertime that might create a problem, even though the report said we were good.
The, the report recommended improving, in, in expanding the pipe size, right?
Not for the basic use of the system. It's for an extreme situation that would potentially happen, as you said, in the summertime, I guess, right.
Do we have that report, Kevin?
Yeah, it was actually in the package I sent you, and that, that wasn't the way I interpreted it.
Where, where is that in the?
I, I don't think it's on the, on our...
It's on the last, it's on the bottom of the... If you look on the last page, it says, in the summary, "The last pipe segment entering the Herringbrook Pump Station will not be able to handle additional peak instantaneous flows in the tributary area without temporary surcharging. The line should be replaced with a 12-inch pipe to sufficiently increase the carrying capacity."
We're just reading the language, Steve.
I, I understand. I think, to Al's point, we can debate the performance standards all night. It's beyond my skill set, to be honest with you. I think that it's, it's, I guess I'm just looking at it like, this is the first of what is hopefully many projects in that area. Something's going to have to be done to this pipe. I get it. The question is, is, you know, should it be Mr. Genta's responsibility to do that for the town?
Can we get a deduct from the betterment fees to pay for the work that needs to be done?
I mean, that, that is certainly something, I mean, when I'm asking for, we'll pay the $240, obviously, we would do the pipe and take a discount for the cost of the pipe, if that's, if that's something the board would consider. It is, it is a challenging pipe, my understanding, again, not beyond my skill set, but this pipe is about 16 feet underground, Kevin, I think?
It's about 10 feet underground, just to the head of the pump station.
Yeah, so it's, it's not like it's just four feet down, back, oh, dig it. It's, it's a, I would imagine that's a challenging dig and for a 60-foot stretch, you know.
This has to take place pretty soon.
My contractor says it's got to wait till April because of digging up the road.
Missed the window now.
No, it's actually, it's not in the road. It's in the parking lot over at the...
He said that it was, when he spoke with the department, it was 16 feet down, and the digging needed just to put the trenching in is going to encroach onto the roadway.
I don't, I don't think it is, but that's something we could obviously revisit. I don't, I don't believe it's...
So where's it going to go from, if, if it was replaced?
If you look at the...
If you look at the, if you look at the pump station, no, if you look at the pump station, because there's a merger of a couple pipes over there, it's a little tricky, I've got it thrown, but it's, it's hardly readable because it's tiny. It's the last sixty feet of pipe that goes from the manhole into the, into the pump station, that's in the burgabah parking lot.
Right. And that sixty feet of pipe is along Driftway, did you say, or?
No, it's in the parking lot.
Private property?
We have an easement to go, to go and do that work.
Love that. Is that where they were working today? Norton?
No, Norton.
Alright, okay, do it. Alright, okay, do it.
So just out of curiosity, is it going from like Ford Place to the pump station, or is it going from the pump station to Driftway?
Going from the pump station towards Driftway, but not all the way out to Driftway. It goes out sixty feet.
Was this originally put in when we, the town had taken it and, and put the pump station there?
Yep.
So when they initially did it, they put eight inches opposed to a twelve inch? Karen, I have a question for you. I, I saw paragraph twenty-six and twenty-seven, are there any other paragraphs that indicate within the special permits, I haven't had a chance to really review it, that indicates that the applicant is obligated for costs the way it was written in paragraph twenty-seven? Now, that's in twenty-seven, if there's any upgrades with the water, the applicant is obligated to pay.
Not for costs, but the applicant is obligated to do many other things.
Nothing to the, specifically to say the way it was written?
For costs, right.
It's really kind of a tricky situation, because I see your point, you know, clearly that, that's in there to say if it doesn't meet qualifications and you got to pay to fix it. And then I think if, from another perspective, if you had been on the betterment, replacing that pipe would have been part of the betterment, and that's what your two hundred and forty thousand dollars would have gone towards, you know, replacing, making the whole system up to, to par. So.
Wasn't, if I may, on that, wasn't this property on the betterment when sewer went in? I'm assuming Chris Ford paid the betterment fee because he owned Fifty Country Way.
He paid the betterment fee.
That's what they got it.
For the five.
For five, I bet.
Right, right.
I'm saying if it was a thirty-something unit project, then you would have paid two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and the flow would have come out, and it would have said it's more, and you would have replaced.
Five grand more, right?
So the way I see it, and I know, Steve, you may disagree with me on this, when an applicant such as your client decides that they want to bring in a new use and augment the use, in this case, expanding from five to thirty?
Thirty, yes, thirty units.
You know, that's this whole special process, special permit process, which does get into, maybe you do need to improve certain facets, it's not just paying for the betterment or the improvement or the privilege fee, it's also, there are costs associated. Could be like a light or intersection that directly impacts it, but they also go offsites in other areas in other towns. So I do see in this that I could easily say, no, the applicant should be paying for it. The one thing that I, that kind of troubles me, and Karen, this isn't to you, but when you write in a, a special permit, specifically if it's going to be improvement to water, it shall be at the owner's expense, it's not listed in the sewage. I'd feel much more comfortable saying it should have been in the sewage, because if it's in the sewage, I would say fair warning. Now, Mr.
We wouldn't be here.
Genta, I'm sorry. Mr. Genta is buying the project from Ford, and from, at some point, the due diligence is going to be on the applicant or the person who's buying the project, and if there's something mistaken, then, I'm sorry, that's on your end of things, because from the town side, it's pretty crystal clear. I think, I will say though, it's not as crystal clear, because I didn't see this language that you raised with paragraph twenty-seven and twenty-six. My feeling on it is, and maybe because I'm looking at it legally, is I'm saying, well, if I were sitting here, it says it's at the owner's expense of water, doesn't say that with sewage, I do understand where you're coming from. The two forty is going to be paid, though, regardless, that's irrelevant to this discussion.
Right.
It's a question of whether or not, do we know what the cost of the sixty feet of pipe, an estimate?
We've, we've been told it's eighty-five to a hundred thousand.
Eighty-five to a hundred thousand, okay.
What do you think this means, John, though? Shall obtain all necessary approvals?
Well, that would be that they'd have to get all the approvals.
So they, well, they're not getting an approval, so technically they'd say, no, we're not going to approve it because the.
The pipe doesn't.
Pipe isn't big enough.
So the distinction that I would make to Mr. Danny's point, and he's absolutely correct, the, if, if this issue arose during the fourteen-month permitting period, that paragraph twenty-six would look exactly like paragraph twenty-seven, and it did. So that's why we were left with thinking that this wasn't an issue for us. We had no idea, and it wasn't until after that was done, that Weston and Sampson report was required of us, and then it came that the pipe is near capacity, or we can debate whether it's at capacity, and then now we're getting saddled. So that would be the one distinction that I would make to Mr. Danahue's comment, that, and I was part of that permitting process, and I know nothing in my file, no any recollection that there was a comment that, by the way, you're going to have to replace sixty feet of pipe that's around the corner offsite, we, you know, wasn't near us, so.
If I can just touch on that briefly, Steve, it was brought up, I believe in the early stages, that there needed to be a sewer review to make sure that the flows would work.
That, that may be, yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, but certainly it was never disclosed to us that there would be, I mean, sewer calculations for sure, we had to make sure that, you know, we were going to put out the right amount and the system could handle it, but it was never pointed out to us that it would have to be an improvement at the owner's cost. That's all, that's my point.
To that extent.
Yeah.
What did, what did you think that letter meant, the December sixteenth letter meant, if it was a condition?
The December sixteenth letter meant we had to pay for the pipe, and that was after the approvals. Yeah, in addition to the two hundred and forty thousand and change.
Right, but that was a year ago, that's, I just, I'm a little confused why it's coming to our attention now.
It's been around a long, this project, you know, was in the permit process for a long time, so it's understandable that getting a handle on a timeline is not easy to achieve.
Okay.
Did you have all the approvals prior to the pre-construction conference?
That I don't know. Lawyers step out once the pre-construction meetings start to happen, so I do not know that.
When was the pre, when was the pre-construction conference, do you remember?
It was just before demolition, so it would have been around the end of last year.
Okay. I guess that's when I'm going to paragraph twenty-six, all necessary approvals, because I want to know, did you get your approvals, and then this popped up? Do we have an answer on that? I don't know.
I, I do know that Mr. Morris had lots of conversations, he was the project engineer, and he was, lots of conversations with different town departments throughout the process, and maybe he could speak to how that went. And you were probably at the pre-construction meeting, I would imagine, too.
Sure, I was. During, during the permitting of this project, I've been on this project since two thousand and twelve, for the records, Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse engineer. During the permitting, through the whole planning board process, we submitted multiple sets of plans, typically when we file an application, you submit in excess of a dozen sets of plans, and those are distributed to all of the town departments for review and comment. We received comments from the DPW, we received very specific comments with respect to the water at the site. We went out, we conducted additional hydrant flow testing, because there was concern on the water pressure and quality, that was all done during the public hearing process, and we were able to address it at that time. We also were aware that with this type of project, there was going to be significant fees associated with the sewer, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We have met with the super, the DPW head at that time, we discussed the fees with him. None of the correspondence we've ever seen from the Department of Public Works or anything from the sewer department during the public hearing process, which was in excess of a year-long period, included any notation or any inclination that there would be any upgrade to public sewer pipes outside of this project. Furthermore, I want to add that there have been several other projects in the Green Bush area permitted after this that have not been required to do offsite infrastructure, that have maybe not thirty units capacity, but they have increased capacity as well. These offsite studies have not been required, they have simply paid the betterments associated with the connection. I can understand Mr. Genta's reasoning for asking for this, this was never brought to his attention until after he permitted what he considered a fully permitted project. He had a special permit that was issued that had been vetted in excess of a year through the town boards. He had correspondence from the DPW, again, nothing relating to offsite improvements that are approaching a hundred thousand dollars in excess of his purchase. I attended the pre-construction conference, obviously the sewer connection wasn't granted prior to that hearing. I was at the site with Laura Harbaugh, the town planner at that time, the site contractor, and I believe Peter was there as well.
Karen?
I'd like to just clarify, the notes that I have in the planning board files say the pre-construction meeting was dated one seventeen, two thousand and seventeen.
You mean after this letter?
The memo, the memo was put together on twelve fifteen, sixteen, that it was issued.
Three weeks later, roughly.
The pre-construction meeting was three weeks later.
So when was, when was the developer told that they had to get this special testing done? When were they told that they had to go and hire the consultant, or pay for the consultant to do the flow testing?
Pretty early on, I don't have the exact dates, but pretty early on, there was requests in, in the conversation.
Fifteen, sixteen?
Well, what's the date of the study?
I don't.
It was done in a couple months before your memo came out.
Right.
It's after Mr. Genta bought the property. It was never brought up during Chris Ford's permitting process.
After the permitting process and before the pre-construction meeting.
But you knew that you had to pay for a consultant to look at the flow of the, of the sewage?
Well, I was asked after purchasing the property that, that was.
Yeah, well, you bought it with, so Mr. Ford knew that he had to pay for that.
No, he did not.
No. This was, this was, Mr. Genta was made aware two months prior to the pre-construction meeting, that he had to pay for the study.
How did that go?
Pay for the study.
Do you remember this, the whole file and everything?
Like Greg says, there were comments along the way.
Yeah, there were a lot of comments on the way, and without, without having that, I know, we went back, one of my engineers was reviewing the project, Danny, and he wrote a whole specification on what he was looking for, it included flow meters and other miscellaneous stuff to look at it, just tried to figure out where the flow was to make sure we could handle it, one way or the other. Instead, the calculations were, were based accordingly. But that was, that was a ways back, I couldn't give you those dates without talking to Dan.
All right. Weston and Sampson, the memo came out on December thirteenth, sixteen, and then you referenced that in the letter you sent to them December fifteenth, and then you didn't meet your pre-construction for another two weeks. So you, you did have this information. That's, that's the, what's, okay. Well, it just comes back to the same question, though.
So are we in agreement that you had the information that the pipe needed to be replaced at the pre-construction meeting? That, to me, seems to be sort of the.
Couple weeks before, it sounds like.
I had the, the information that it was requested that it be replaced.
Okay.
But we also had the report saying that there was sufficient flow with the project that it, you know, to be under the ninety-seven percent of the flow.
And at the pre-construction meeting, did the notes, just, I'm sorry to re, you know, rehash this, but did the notes clearly state that they had to absorb the cost for the replacement of that twelve-inch pipe, Karen?
It's not mentioned at all in the pre-construction conference, no.
It's not, okay.
It says in the memo.
I know it's in the, your memo on the sixteen.
Twelve fifteen.
Yeah, on the twelve, I know it's on there, yep. Sean, did you have any other further thoughts?
No, not, not right now, it's just, I'm going back and forth, I just, I don't know how, something like this happens, shouldn't happen.
Well, I think, you know, just sort of listening to all the conversation, there, it seems to be a little blurry with the way, and this is, I'm not judging, but just looking at paragraph twenty-six and twenty-seven, and the, and the detail in the language with regards to sewer and with regards to water is very different with regards to that paying, you know, paying for it. I don't know if that's customary, I am not an expert with the planning language. If typically, each area is usually more detailed, you know, with regards to costs, I can see how it's a little blurry. But I also know it's subject to all the conditions that the, that the DPW, you know, provides to, to builders.
May I ask just one more question? So, is this, just so, did this just not really get on your radar because of sequencing of construction, that it was offsite? I mean, if you knew about this, it says clearly in this memo before you had your pre-construction, it was at your cost.
I was under the impression it was a negotiation.
Okay.
This request.
And had there been follow-up since, between now, between the issuance of this letter and this date?
No.
Well, I mean, was there a negotiation? That's the question.
There weren't any.
There were discussions about, there were discussions about the letter itself, but, you know, I didn't, we weren't in negotiations.
You're in the eleventh and a half hour, that's a concern, too. I mean, you know, this does, this development is something that is, you know, valued in the overlay district, obviously, but.
So what did you think was going to happen? Clearly you knew there was an issue, and there was some negotiation that was due.
I was under the impression that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, quarter of a million dollars, goes toward, to the town for future improvements to the system, this being one of them. And when I heard that the cost was eighty to a hundred thousand, I thought, okay, no brainer, two hundred and fifty thousand, put eighty thousand toward the project, and there's a surplus.
Mr. Genta thought that, that he'd get a credit for the eighty thousand, too, he had a, but then when I read the memo with him, and I said, no, that's not what it says, it says it's in addition to the two hundred and fifty thousand.
I was taken back when they told me that you didn't have a contractor, and they wanted me to do the work. I have no idea how to do sewer work. That was, that threw me for a loop.
All right.
What, what does it boil down to? I, it's, it's in the beginning, but you have thirty-two units, thirty-two sewer connections.
Thirty.
Well, then you have a retail.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, thirty residential.
Thirty residential and six thousand of commercials.
Okay. Divided by two hundred and forty thousand, alright, comes out to about eight thousand, nine thousand, about eight thousand dollars. Where do, what, you know, John, myself, we pay eighteen thousand dollars per hookup fee. Where does that, you know, how do you get from what we're looking to eighteen thousand?
I can explain that.
Yeah.
First of all, they received credits for five, they already paid five nineteen, five nineteen thousandths. And secondly, in the sewer rules and regulations, and a one-bedroom apartment is considered one-half of a sewer unit.
Okay, all right.
And then a two-bedroom apartment is considered a full sewer unit.
I forgot that.
So, I think.
So they're paying their fair share, just like anyone else?
They're paying as per, that, that fee is as per the, and then, as Mr. Morris said, that was made known to the previous owner through discussions about how many units would there be, what size would they be, if they're apartments versus condos, stores, all that was all worked out in advance. The, you know, it's typical in a special permit hearing process for the town to ask for, understand if, if an intersection needs to be improved, if a traffic light needs to be installed, if a.
Sidewalk.
A crosswalk needs to be installed, if water pipes need to be upgraded, hydrants need to be installed in public infrastructure, and that is worked out in the course of the planning process, made known to the applicant, discussed with the board, and then ultimately written into the permit. And at the time that the permit is issued, it would say you need to install a crosswalk or a radar speed sign or fix an intersection. In this permit, and again, going back to Mr. Danahue's comments, it, it lays out a number of things that the developer must do to put this project in place, one of which is article twenty-seven, determine the adequacy of the existing water system, and it spells out in exquisite detail who will pay for what. In referencing the sewer, there isn't that degree of data. So you could say that there's, there's an expectation that I'll fix the intersection, I will install some sidewalks, I will improve, study and improve the water line. There isn't necessarily an expectation, since everything else is so explicit, that's not explicit. So there isn't necessarily the expectation for the permit holder that. So there isn't necessarily the expectation for the permit holder that they would be paying for infrastructure. That might be one way to look at this. And maybe we need to do, I'm sure that will be taken into account in subsequent special permit hearings. It's not a planning board fault, it's just, sewer is kind of new in this area.
I mean, I guess the other way to look at it is that they're not approved, so they can't do the project.
I'm sorry?
I guess the other way to look at it is they're not approved and they can't do the project.
Can't hook up, right.
Yeah, but...
Roll that up the scale back.
Right. You know, so that's, I mean, that's kind of what it reads as well. You need to, you need to get all the necessary approvals, and they don't.
So...
So it's muddy.
When do you tell them, when they go through the permitting process, what approval requires?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering if this is something that we negotiate and we, we come to some understanding.
Does it sound, remind you at all like the project Eddie McLaughlin, Steve Bjorkland did, Sam Tilden's firm? Does it, did, do you have any flashbacks? I mean, that was a, all right, so they needed, they needed, you know, increase in water. Yeah, and pressure might have been low. So we partnered with them, and they ran a larger line from...
Also the Hennessy property, remember the Hennessy property partnering?
Yes, right, right.
They partnered with them and they paid full cost.
We saw negotiations. They did the construction with our engineers, the approvals, they did it much, you know, not at prevailing rates. You know, they could just, you know, private people can do things less expensive than weekend, you know, is this one of those situations? I was listening to what Tony said earlier, and I can see exactly where they're coming from, but yet, you know, just want to make it kind of fair across the board. So, Al, sorry to cut you off, but am I thinking the right way here?
Yeah, well, I would specify, you know, they couldn't go forward with the project and the permit would not be issued.
But that was during the permitting process.
Unless these specific things were done.
They're painting now, though. They're hanging curtains, you know, pretty much.
Those were during the permitting process, not...
Right, right.
You know, I have another question, and, I mean, this was permitted by the planning board, is this, I mean, is this our decision just because we're the sewer commissioners? Or, okay, I just didn't know, just because, you know, the planning board are the ones that permitted the project? Does anybody else from the planning board, I see a couple of members out there, have any comments or statements? Nope, saying none? All right. Well, I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion, and we can, I don't know if we have to decide this evening, we need to think about it.
I'd find somebody.
It's not, to me, it's not black and white, unfortunately. Wish it were.
Thank you for walking us through that, because it is complicated.
I mean, Mr. Jenta's not opposed to understanding the nuances of the town having to undertake the project and the cost to the town. He's not opposed to, if the board was, would see fit to allow that, to take the project on for a credit for the actual cost of the project, maybe much like the Bjorkland, where they did the work and then you partnered with them. He would figure out exactly what it's going to cost and then take a credit on the 240, you know, the sewer fees or something to do that. If that would make sense, I think, and he would supervise and manage it with, of course, you know, the town engineers' guidance and advice on how to do it, because he's not a drain layer, but Kevin says he can become one pretty quickly if we need to. So I think he would offer to do that.
Well, that's not what the other one's for, right? Not as a credit on the 240. Like, the 240 is, is revenue that's coming to the town regardless, right?
I understand. Well, I, you mentioned negotiations.
No, no, yeah, I'm just saying...
I'm just suggesting that maybe there is a way that we can meet in the middle here and get away from the gray and the fuzziness of paragraph 26, and, and my position and your position comes closer together. Mr. Jenta's, he's a contractor, he gets the job done, he gets it done, but we need, you know, we, I'm suggesting that, you know, we, we get compensated through a reduction of the fees that are charged for the sewer connection fee as a credit or something like that.
It is cheaper for the developer to do the project than it is for the town to do the project for a number of different reasons.
It would be literally, like, the cost, invoice, here's the invoice from the drain layer, whatever it is, you know. Wouldn't be marked up, wouldn't be managed, he'd take on the project and do that. I think that's part of, given what I'm looking at, I think that's a pretty fair result in, you know, from our perspective. We want to see the pipe improved for everybody's benefit, but not at our sole cost, you know, so...
We don't want to be at next summer and...
Another project comes before you, and now all of a sudden we're having the same conversation.
Well, no, I don't want to be at the Burger Barn, having them call me that they've got a problem in the building.
Right, and we are, we do have three buildings that we're phasing in.
Right.
So, so the first two buildings shouldn't be a problem, it's the last building won't happen until the springtime. So it might be easier to do the work without winter conditions, too.
Right, and peak is the Samurai, so...
So for that to happen, though, we have to have a conversation with Kevin and the DPW about getting water meters for one building at a time. I mean, he is phasing the construction, that's the way we actually set it permitting-wise. And if that's amenable, then we could reserve doing this pipe upgrade until, you know, the ground thaws in the spring and do it at the last, before the last building. In other words, if you voted for this, the condition would be that we wouldn't get, what, occupancy permit for the last building.
So it doesn't hold up the sale?
Right, right.
Say if we get the first two buildings up and running, there's cash flow, that makes it a lot easier to...
Are these, I'm sorry, are these rental condos?
These are rental condos.
Our rentals, okay. I thought so, I just...
Pipe's not needed until the third building's in place.
Okay.
Right.
And I was, I was just looking at the board, now there is a sequence of construction that was agreed to as part of this whole thing, and so certain buildings, B and C, have to be done and building has to be weather tight before occupancy is granted.
But why wouldn't, here's what we can do, we can say, no, give us a 240, and you pay 85.
Did you have something you want?
So water meters for each, water meter for each unit, each building.
Yeah, each building. Because they're parks, so we don't have to meter each condo.
Then his total cost is going to be 325.
Just one bill, one for each building.
We need the water turned on just to finish the project.
We need the water turned on to have the hydrants, I'm right, the hydrants aren't live should there, an accident take place.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to turn the water on because of the sewer issue has a little bit of...
So instead of being 325, he'd pay 260.
Well, I spoke to the fire chief about that, and we do have a hydrant within 500 feet there. I think, I don't know if we've received all the asbestos and everything else for the water line, but we can, we can talk about that afterwards. We don't have to, we don't have to get into that now.
It's the nearest hydrant.
There's a hydrant, there's a hydrant on Ford Place, and there's another hydrant on Country Way there, I believe. I talked to the chief about it, and he said he was covered with the hydrants he had.
Wow. We've got two on-site that are ready to go.
Ready to go.
Three on-site. I mean, it's not a steel building.
We can't, we can't occupy these buildings until we get all the approvals, so I don't know why, just turn the water on. To me, that's a no-brainer.
All right, so there's been some calculations going on up here left and right. What are thoughts? I think, I think what I'm sensing, and obviously, everybody can go to a vote here, that there's an inclination to, to negotiate. Thoughts with regards to sharing the cost with them, you know, 50%, just to be equal, whatever the cost is, the estimate that comes in based on your better pricing for the work? So we agree to, you know, 50%? I don't, is that something the board would entertain?
I guess, I guess in response to the 50%, I'm thinking about the neighborhood on that side, and I'm thinking about the different spots that are going to have projects. It would seem to me that there are probably at least three other, you know, viable sites that will probably have density even greater than ours, that maybe, maybe the, maybe the number's 25%, you know what I mean, instead of 50, because there are, I can, I'm thinking of three, and you probably know which ones I'm talking about that are around us that will likely be coming forward with those types of applications. So I think 50's a little steep for my liking, because it's half the cost for the benefit of the other projects that will come through. And then during that permitting process, you can, you know, you can have that discussion about assessing them, I guess, although the pipe will be done, so I don't know how you get away with that.
And if I could bring up and just comment on that, if there is another large project going in, they'll do a similar sewer evaluation, and maybe another pipe that, now that you flow into, would have the additional flows that would cause them to increase some other pipes along the way, not just that one.
We're going to put this pipe in so it can handle whatever the village business overlay district requires, right? I mean, what's the point? We're going to dig it up, let's put in a pipe that works.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the pipes prior to that 60 feet back towards, you know, you're using up a volume in that sort of pipe.
At least one of the projects that I'm thinking of is downstream of us of that, you know what I mean? It's on the other side of us, meaning towards the river shed. Anyway, that was, and I haven't talked to my client about this, I'm just suggesting that...
Why don't, why don't you make the next step and find out what it's going to cost you to, to do the project? And then we can talk about some sort of cost sharing on that and give you a credit, maybe on the 240, on some percentage of that.
Okay, is that fair? Does that sound fair to you?
Yeah, we can do that, just with the holidays and all, and sure what timeframe that's going to take.
But can we at least agree to get the water turned on for the fire departments and get a meter over to the first building?
Can we get a meter for the first building or two while we do that?
I don't see why not. I, I have to check with the water department, make sure, are all the asbestos in for the water lines and everything else all completed, all the requirements?
We gave in preliminary asbestos, final asbestos have not been prepared yet, because all the connections have not been made, but the preliminary ones are done.
And the water department has them?
I believe so.
Well, I'll talk to the water department tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll comply with whatever they look for, at least at this stage of our construction and evaluation, we'll do that, yeah.
All right, that makes sense.
And would, you just want a meter, the first building, the first phase, right now?
Yeah, yeah.
First two buildings are under construction.
Right, right.
Yeah, they need water to, for fire safety and to finish the construction, plastering and everything else.
Test the connections on them, plumbing and all.
Plumbing and stuff.
All right, so you'll come back with us, to us?
Sure.
With an estimate?
We'll get that number.
We could put it on...
On the 9th, can we put you on the next meeting, the 9th?
Okay.
That's fast enough for you?
Yeah.
And you'll be able to get the cost estimate?
Mr. Harris, any comment?
Who's the right person to talk to in the sewer department for the specs of that that's going to be done?
I, I want to make sure you are talking to the right person. 95 seems steep to me, but, and I want to make sure we're talking about the same line. The line that's outlined in this memo is 60 feet from the pump station. There's nothing on Ford Place, nothing to that area, so I want to make sure there's no confusion on that, because we're just looking at the one line.
At least when my contractor, Michael Dugle, talked to somebody in your department, he was under the impression it was 16 feet down.
All right, so let's just make sure...
We'll figure that out.
Figure that out.
Yeah, makes a big difference. My understanding was, and I looked in the manuals, it was 10 feet, so we'll...
Good, that's a big difference.
That's a huge difference.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it's half that.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully, that's the case.
We'll be back on the 9th.
The 9th, we'll put you on the agenda on the 9th, right, Lori?
Happy holidays.
Happy Christmas holidays. Thank you for coming in.
By the way, I vote for Veterans Memorial Gym, just, you know, my two cents.
That's your vote.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Karen.
I run down the hall, man.
Uh, yes. Do I just take a break?
Yeah, maybe just a quick...
We're just going to take a five-minute break, and we'll resume in five minutes.
From Country Way to Hadley, just the services going across.
From Countryway to Hadley, just the services, going across.
So you have the full water replacements down Oceanside Drive?
All right. So is the road going to be totally dug up again after we just paved it?
No, we didn't just pave that, that's...
Countryway, uh, Gannett Road, okay. That we had recently, didn't we?
We paved from Hadley to Slade Road with the Mysquash Katsuo project.
Okay, I just thought we redid Gannett recently.
With the sidewalks?
Yeah, with the sidewalk?
We did the sidewalk, the trail, we did the trails on the sidewalk.
And we didn't do the road at that time?
We didn't do the road.
And this would be halfway across?
It'll be halfway across to wherever the other pipe falls.
Kevin, I asked you last time before we started 123. I mean, I was, I am all in favor of it, the water up, you know, the water lines to be replaced, but it's getting old driving around town, you know? We either, and you said we were just going to do this one, you know, and here we are going to, and I'm talking about the, I'm not talking about so much the laterals, if that's what it is, but talking about just taking, doing another phase, you know? I know it's real important, but the roads are terrible, we, you know, we're just, tell, give me a plan or something, tell me when these things are going to be, you know, done. It's just, you know?
Basically, our plan is in the springtime, we're going to hit a lot of roads, I think we're doing almost six miles of roads that we're going to be paving in the spring. We're going to do 123, we're going to do Baca Road, all the roads that were affected in the last water project, we delayed paving those roads unfortunately because of the drought. We weren't able to charge the lines with water, so we weren't able to do the connections until this year. So we did the connections this year, and we're letting them settle out. So yes, there is a lot of areas that we need to pave, and, you know, in the spring, I hope you can, you know, people are complaining because it's too busy because we're paving everywhere. That's our plan.
But they move so fast, so you get some detours, and people get a little aggravated, but the next day, you know, Tilcon or TL Edwards, they're gone, and next thing you know, you have a, you know...
They grind the roads, and then they come back and do it. And we're looking at each street, there's some streets, like Baca Road, the thickness is only two inches thick, we don't have enough to grind, so what we're going to do is we'll overlay it and raise the castings up accordingly. And we'll take care of all the roads and get them fixed, you know, a lot of those roads will get fixed up.
Okay, when you get the final list, will you let us have that so we can let people...
Oh, yeah, no, gladly, we can put it on the, we can put it on the website, that's not a problem.
That'll be a good dig.
These streets we plan on doing.
All right, so you have two bids, one late, one for $48,200, and the other one $151,000. Obviously, they didn't want to do the job.
So we went with the $48,000 one.
So that's, I mean, they're the only ones that qualified?
They were the only ones that met all the requirements, and you know what, it's just like anything now, a lot of these engineering firms are really busy, and they just can't take on the work at this time.
All right, any other questions with regards to the design? Do I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract for engineering design services for Phase 3 water main design to Weston and Sampson of Peabody, Mass. for the amount not to exceed $48,200.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Ms. Avignani. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is for the MS4 storm water management?
Yes, so the DEP put in some new regulations, DEP and EPA, a couple years ago about MS4, which is basically a stormwater, and just like every street has catch basins, so square covers that you have, the drain water goes into there, and then it goes out to either swamp, marsh, wetlands, or a river, or even the ocean. So one of the requirements is, we have to make a lot of updates to our system just to comply with DEP and EPA regulations. So the state actually has given a year leniency on this, but we're going after it now so that we're in compliance when the new term comes up. So Sean put together an RFP, and he's kind of been heading this up. If you have any specific questions, I can let him answer it.
I know it's something that the town has known is going to be coming forward. Over the last few years, they have set aside some money anticipating these new requirements from the EPA. We've already started implementing some of the improvements, like the storm scepter that was installed at the Highway Department. So some of the discharges that already exist, we've made improvements to. The EPA is going to want to see mapping, GIS mapping and locations, testing of what's coming out of them, whether people's washer machines are hooked up to some pumps that end up in catch basins that end up down the river. It's going to happen over many, many years. They anticipate maybe even creating a drain department because it's going to reach that level. We'll see, they've thrown that thing out and scared, I think, a lot of communities. This was supposed to be in place July of last year, and they got a lot of pushback from the states, and that's DEP, so now it's July of the upcoming year that this notice of intent be submitted. So we're kind of early in the stages, but we did receive some input back from the engineers who were loving this as winter projects, to start to prepare these documents, start to update our stormwater management plan, kind of a guidebook to move forward in the years, what areas need to be addressed, things like that. And Horstley-Witten's done a lot of drainage work, I think they have staff members that were part of writing the stormwater management policy for DEP in-house. They put together a well-prepared RFP that brought it right through educating not only the public, but the staff, what they need to look for, how things are going to move forward, outreach materials, things like that, so a thorough RFP definitely submitted on their part.
You note that two of the other bids had incomplete proposals?
Right, they didn't carry it through as far. They offered extra services that Horstley-Witten knew were going to be needed to complete the project, like the public outreach. They just took it, and I think it's because they're familiarity with the regs. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And where are we paying this from?
We have two articles associated for MS4 compliance with $84,000.
Okay. And this is $56,880. Okay. Any other questions?
And Sean, again, it's just the mapping and things like that, it's really not any construction of any type.
Right.
Nor is it for any designing of any construction, is it?
No, but they're going to determine the areas that we need to address next, whether it's with the rain garden at the outfall, and that's when we'll get into looking at costs, whether we can do it with one hydrodynamic separator, or whether we could put a rain garden in, or, and that's what we'll end up with out of this report, too, with the stormwater mapping plan, not only the locations, but recommendations, I guess, on how to address the areas and move forward. Maybe the stormwater bible, we can call it, people follow that, just like we did with the drainage.
Okay.
I think the executive act needs to be updated to the $56,880, because it always says 800.
Oh.
Just so you're aware. Yes, okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Thank you so much, money.
Do I have a motion? No? Yes?
Wrong motion, sorry.
Did you hear Lorraine's note about the monetary? It's $56,880.
I apologize. $656.80, okay, I move the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide professional engineering services for the MS-4 Notice of Intensive Mission to Horstley-Witten Group for $56,080.
No, $880.
$880.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy. Second, second by Ms. Avignani. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 5-0.
Excellent. And a third one is, we put an RFP out for the engineering services and permitting for the Dolan Well Field, and we have the results back in the second sheet. We had three different engineering firms come back with different costs, we evaluated it, and cost-wise, we felt Weston-Sampson was the best contractor for this, and we're suggesting that we award the contract to Weston-Sampson.
So this one is $129,700. The high was Woodward and Curran at almost $300,000, $297,950, and then tie-in bond was $200,000, and we allocated $200,000 in the April 2017 annual meeting. Well, we certainly know we need to do this.
Haven't we done work on this property before, Sean?
Yeah.
I've heard the name for quite a long time. Can you tell me, so for $129,000, is the quantity there, is the quality there, would we, potentially, and I, you know, could we, and I, it wouldn't be our fault, but could we potentially waste in money? You know, to find out?
You know, we could be, and it's an excellent question. What this incorporates, this isn't just designing permitting to do it, we're actually going to send some trucks out there and do some borings, and do some drillings, to see what type of water we get extracted. It also has pump tests, it also has quality control tests to see if there's any contaminants in there. So there's a lot more to it, it's not going to just be, before we went out with a design or get ready to build the wells, we would have an idea of how much water we could get out, when we could get the water out, and what the quality of water will be.
Where's the location of this well?
It's off Countryway, kind of between Countryway and the Harlot Street area, it's between two houses, we have an easement to access it, it's in the woods behind Countryway in that area.
How close is it to the railroad tracks?
It's within the railroad track zone.
Remember this, huh?
Yeah.
Outside, and I remember Paul Reedy talking about, you know, you know, maybe directional drilling or something like that.
No, this was permitted back in the early 2000s, this, the...
Right.
Test wells were done, permits were obtained. Then last fall, during the drought, we went down to visit the DEP to revisit the permits, and they said, well, they've expired, or you need to start over. So this is really redoing, and during that permitting process, it was, it was a good source of water, adequate water, I mean, good flows, it would be, instead of one big well, as I remember, it was a well field as opposed to one straw, it's a series of straws, drawing from that basin area, and they, at the time that the first permits were obtained, it looked very viable, but then there was a diversion of attention to look at the cranberry bogs, remember that?
Trial, yes.
And so, it was actually, it was MBTA money to develop that well field back in that time.
But I thought it was too close to the tracks.
And then we went over, looked at cranberry bogs, and that didn't materialize, and then we didn't, so now we're back to the well.
But it's not too close to the right of way.
Right.
All right, okay.
We met with the DEP, and like Al said, and we kind of walked in and said, hey, we want to, we knew our permit, we're ready, trying, you know, to see where it was, and they said no. But we did, we did point out the proximity of the railroad tracks, and that wouldn't be a deterrent from proving this, as the way it was written, from who we went over.
That was initially, though, the three, so two, so.
Any other questions?
I got a question, separate from this, I just received from the Historical Commission, I guess, a historical designation of Zero Kent Street, and then another house that's on the Driftway, but in the explanation, this is the field, the gardening field, it was a location for the, one of the four sites for the senior center, it's that parcel between New Driftway and Old Driftway, heading down towards Central Country Club. There's an old field that's been worked, you know, for years, they call it Abbey Field, I think they call it, or the Abbey Field, or whatnot. During the description I was reading about it today was, they said that there was like a cement block that they believe is covering the existence of a well, and I was just curious, you know, do you folks, if you know, have that charted, they said they covered it up, but that's a part of the historical, the state, whatever this is, that the state does to designate and they do, like the history, and I'll forward it to you, but I was curious, is that another well that we have that's known about?
A private one?
By the vote?
A known private one.
No, no, Central Country Club, you know, where Driftway comes down, and then you have Kent Street, the old Kent Street?
Yeah.
It's, there's a field right there that they use to grow beans, I guess.
John Lobsters.
And that's, so there, I'll send you the description.
Right across from where you have a pump station.
Yeah, they say it's a four-by-four.
That they now pump to the golf course, right?
I don't know where it goes, but this is the golf course.
Yeah.
But there's a little...
I'll just, I'll send it to you, maybe you have it, but I just thought it was something that I was curious.
There are a lot of them, that valve was shut down, we had high manganese.
High manganese and iron in there.
It was just used on the golf course, they put it in the pond.
I thought that pond, I thought that pump was actually on the golf course.
No, that's...
It comes out of the ground, down there on Old Kent Street, goes up to the pond, they put it into the pond.
Gotcha.
And that's what they use for the irrigation.
The man-made pond that we made when we built the course.
Yes.
The lined pond.
Probably fill it up with manganese.
It's good for the fish stock, right?
No, it is, that well was shut down, as Al said, because of manganese and iron, at that time, they had heavy manganese.
I thought that was, but to John's point, that was a well, that's why we couldn't irrigate the driving range, because I thought it was a well on the course.
We do have another well that's actually on the course.
It's contaminated.
No, and that's, that's in use, that's not contaminated.
Well, at one time, could we not use it, maybe, I could have sworn, that's why it was a big dust bowl at the driving range.
Then there's the question, on that property off of Greenfield, off the fourth hole, whether there's another one in that vicinity. I'm only mentioning, I just happened to come across it, you probably have it, but if, I'll shoot it to you, and if, you know...
You can take a look at it.
Apparently, it was shut down in the early 70s in Boston Sandig gravel.
Motion?
Shut down.
We'll let Sean finish. Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for providing engineering and permanent services, permitting services for the design and permitting of a drinking water well field on the former Dolan property to Weston-Sampson of Peabody, Mass. for $129,700.
Second. Moved by Mr. Harris, second by Ms. Canfield. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great.
Thank you.
That's it, right? Is that for you?
That's it.
Weston-Sampson's got a good question for you.
Thank you very much.
Well, they did leave, if you look at some of the other projects, there is a lot of money on the table, too, so...
Yeah?
Yeah.
You mean the other bids?
The other bids, so, and it's all apples-to-apples what they were bidding, so...
Okay, sounds good, thanks. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year, see you next year.
I'm keeping Sean here.
Just taking, keeping Sean, okay. Hi, Chris, how are you?
Good, hello, everybody, good evening.
Welcome, so Chris is here to discuss adding a stop sign to a currently three-way intersection on Lotus Ave and Kingsway, and making it a four-way stop.
Correct. Essentially, we, traffic rules has received some issues from the neighbors stating that they feel, I guess essentially, there was a sign wrongly installed there, then it was moved, added some confusion, and they've been looking for a stop sign to be put up there to make it into a four-way stop. It's, I don't know if you get any pictures?
We have a map.
But it's a pretty straight road, so, considering situat, but it's, currently it's a three-way, so we'd like to, we'd like to get an action or your approval to make it into a four-way.
Well, I'm all for it, living on a corner that went from a two-way to a three-way, and had to fight for a four-way, certainly understand what happens when you have a three-way stop, it's just confusing.
Confusing.
It's nutty, it's just, I don't understand that whole three-way concept at all, so, does everyone see the picture in there?
One's coming up now. Put one up there, too, I don't know if you need to...
The big, the big stop is the one you're adding.
I love visuals.
Motion?
Please.
Move to have the engineering department install the appropriate signage and line painting, and have the town of City of traffic schedule reflect Lotus Ave traffic come to a stop in a southwesterly direction at Kingsway, thus making the intersection of Lotus Ave and Kingsway a four-way stop.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Avignani. Any further discussion? I just have one question, Officer Billings isn't here, but the police are all on board as well, I suspect?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, thanks, Chris, thanks for coming and waiting.
That was easy. Thank you, happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.
All right, merry holidays.
See you, guys.
Happy New Year.
You, too.
All right, old business. To review the town meeting dates and Mass. general bylaw, Lorraine, did you want to provide an update? an update? I think this was a request to you.
At the Summer Fest Lockman Meeting, Mr. Vignani and Ms. Dennehy asked me to look into what was involved in changing the town meeting date. So I met with the town clerk. It reviewed Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, along with the town charter and the town bylaws. And they don't need to change anything except the bylaw. If they wanted to, it's bylaw 20140. It would require a change of town meeting. Things to consider in making a change would be budget timeline, which is very important to be able to make the town meeting schedule, as well as any state laws requiring completion by the end of June, which is stated in the state of Mass. General Law. So, and whatever you decide that you'd like to do, it needs to be agreed by town council. So I attached all the documents here. You can take a look at it. Mass. General Law, Charter, bylaw. And then basically, the current bylaw says the annual town meeting should be held on the second Monday in April.
So was your request, John and Tony, just to see what it would take to make the language more flexible?
Yeah, we found that it was completely inflexible.
Okay.
And things could pop up that would cause us to need to change it and what those steps would have to be.
Okay.
So, the Charter, the Charter's no problem, it's just the bylaw.
Right.
Okay.
But you do have guidelines within Mass. General Law that you have to meet.
That's okay. It basically seems.
It basically says it has to be held between February and the end of June.
June, which gives you a lot of flexibility.
Right.
So we need to change the bylaw.
Right, put it before town meeting.
Right.
And I think one, one thing, I talked to Lorraine about it, would be, and again, I forgot, this was a week and a half ago we talked, but was to say no later than, as far as the date, whereas right now, it specifically says the date.
Second, yeah.
So that would give you the flexibility of being able to say, "We're going to do it on this Tuesday or that Tuesday."
Right.
As opposed to specifically identifying it.
No, that makes sense. Are we in time to put this on, the warrant for this annual town meeting?
Yeah.
To update the bylaw? We okay to add it on?
Mm-hmm.
Whatever you decide.
Okay. Okay. I'm all for making language more flexible.
The only other thing you have to consider is in that same Section 20140. In the third paragraph, it says, "The annual election of offices should be held on the sixth Saturday following the Monday on which the annual town meeting is to convene." So you'd have to, you know, change that as well. But you'd still be required to meet the timeline in Mass. General Law to have it concluded by the end of June.
Yes, we can add language to make sure that, again, it doesn't fall.
The election.
That the election falls.
By the end of June.
Yeah.
So they, I think the way it was conceived was to suggest you have town meeting, and then after town meeting, at some point, you're going to have the Board of Selectmen elected. Because you wouldn't want to have the Board of Selectmen elected before you have town meeting.
Right.
Because all that information's going to be lost if somebody decides not to run or if they lose.
Right.
So I think, you know, the concept, again, would be no later than.
Right.
A certain date. It'd give you the flexibility, because it's been.
But you cannot have it too close, either.
Correct.
You could say at least three weeks after or something, you know.
But no later than.
But is that something we can change?
No, I think the state says.
Right.
The six weeks, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't.
No, I think that's, is that the Charter or is that the statute?
I provided copies of the Mass. General Law here for annual meetings and elections.
Right. All right, so we'll review it. And, I mean, I didn't know you asked you this. It makes sense to make the language a little bit more flexible. If we can do it at this meeting, help for future planning purposes.
And the reason is, is that we find that we either are getting close to school vacation and then other situations.
Right.
And it's trying to get people to maximize on holidays, maximize attendance.
Yeah.
That's how I'm looking at it.
No, I think it's a good idea.
It used to be, wasn't the town meeting, was that like the beginning of March?
Yeah, had to be.
And then the elections were Sony, it was like consistent, which made sense. It's just that the reason why we bumped it was, we're just so early with all the budgeting and trying to push the budget to plan it better.
Right. Okay.
All right, so we'll get, we'll get a proposal together for the town meeting and put it on the warrant.
All right. No vote needed for that at this time. So, new business, discuss and vote, Board and Committee appointments. I think we have one, which is the Republican Town Committee. Due to a resignation, Lori Withrow resigned, so we need to appoint another temporary registrar for the Republican Town Committee. And the term will expire in 2019. So Mr. Conley Ford has stepped up to be a temporary registrar for the Board of Registers. If somebody would like to make a motion?
I'm, I'm.
Still loading.
Move to approve Conway W. Ford.
Conley.
Conley, I can't read it, it's all gibberish.
Read mine.
There you go. Vote to appoint Conley W. Ford as a temporary registrar on the recommendation of the Republican Town Committee. His term will expire in 2019.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Mr. Dennehy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next is a discussion and vote to close the annual special town meeting warrants. They close today. Is it suggested motion to close the warrant today?
Move the Board of Selectmen close the warrant for April 19, 2017, two thou, oops, excuse me, April 9, 2018, annual special town meetings at 9:40.
Twenty.
9:20.
I think someone else needs to read the motions. Second. Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield.
I should say that again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm definitely not reading these.
Yeah, Tony's done. Tony is done.
I'll stop.
Okay, and then we do have, yes, so on our desk, Lorraine has given us the annual licenses to renew.
The last of the annual license.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following restaurant, all alcohol licenses for 2018. Situate Post VFW Post Number 3169, Whittles Walk Oral Restaurant.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following retail, package store, wine mall, and malt licenses for 2018. Mulaney's Fish Market Corp.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following club, all alcohol licenses for 2018. Hadley Golf Club.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following annual farmer's series pouring permit for malt license for 2018. Untold Brewing.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following common victualler licenses for 2018. Oral Restaurant, Hadley Golf Club. Situate Post VFW Number 3169. Whittles Walk, South Shore Cinemas. Mulaney's Fish Market Corp. Untold Brewing. Cryo Frozen Yogurt. Riva Pizzeria. Rossetti Two. The Silent Chef. Mary Lou's News. The Fresh Feast. Lucky Finn Cafe. Known as Homemade. Oceanside Inn, Inn at Situate Harvard, Inc.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for 2018. Untold Brewing. Lucky Finn Cafe. Situate Post VFW Number 3169. Hadley Golf Club.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class II licenses for 2018. Larry A. Finney.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class III licenses for 2018. Ryan Allen LLC.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Ms. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstain.
Move the Board of Selectmen.
Four, one abstention, Lorraine.
Move the Board, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the movie theater license for 2018. South Shore Cinemas.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following bowling and electronic gaming license for 2018. Situate Bowlaway.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to issue a bed and breakfast license for 2018. Cliffside, Oceanside Inn.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that on the, Peggy? There's one by Peggy.
No, Oceanside Drive is Oceanside Inn, isn't it?
No, is it the one?
Cliffside, I think it's the one of Peggy.
Peggy?
Yeah.
It's not on page, is it?
It's going up over the bridge.
Second.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the innkeeper's license for 2018. The Inn at Situate Harvard.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dennehy, second by Ms. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you for reading that.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't want to have misstepped. If I'm a member of a club that was just voted, should I have abstained from voting? Probably?
It's up to you. I, I thought about that when you voted, but.
Yeah, no, it didn't occur to me until you did.
Doesn't, doesn't really matter, does it?
If you'd like it, we can just re-vote.
If you'd like to, we can redo it.
Yeah.
I think it's probably a good idea.
Which one is it?
I mean, Hadley Golf Club. It's, there's two places, they're in three places.
Well, forget it, then.
I'll read them. No, I can't even do that.
Want to rescind your vote, John? I think John did.
Tell you what I'm going to do, hang on one second.
Okay, well, in future, I will.
That's right.
Yeah, I just.
That's really up to the person. If they feel there's a conflict, it's, right.
If you're a part order or had some financial interest.
No, I'd just like to go there. Just like most of the places on the list.
No.
Okay. All right, just wanted to check.
Be transparent. All right, so we're not going to revote?
Okay.
On, on advice of our esteemed. That's fine. All righty, correspondence. I think we have one correspondence, John.
Let me find it. Ah-ha.
It's just, they're taking a notice, man, of a celebration.
This is a surprise party for Steve Janaszewski's retirement. It's a celebration on January 10th at 6:00 PM at the Barker Tavern. For those of you who don't know, that's at 21 Barker Road. And it's a buffet dinner, presentation of award for 30 years. Please don't tell Steve. The cost is $30, but for all those out there who'd be interested in going, it's going to be a great opportunity to wish Steve well in his endeavors and moving on, and to thank him for 30 years plus of dedication to Situate and doing a great job in valuing the properties and trying to keep things fair. So all are unwelcome. Please don't tell Steve.
Thank you. I don't see any other correspondence in there. So next is just approval of the meeting minutes from the December 5th meeting, which